This conference will now be recorded.
Planning Commission meeting, November 30th. A reschedule of last week's regular meetings. We quite a few, okay, so agenda changes? Maybe we'll add at the end the meeting schedule where we'll review in person versus remote as part of other business under that item.
Welcome.
Welcome, Kelsey. I mean, that's the most exciting thing on our announcements, I think.
By a long stretch.
I suppose I'm going a little out of order. Open to public for items not related to the agenda. Noah, I saw you pop up. Were you trying to give us something not related to the agenda?
He is still here.
Well, if anyone has anything not related to the agenda, let us know. And then the announcements. So we have Kelsey here too. Our new city planner here joining us. And thanks for the packet and the text.
Yeah.
Very nice. Well, we have been asking for reinforcements, knowing that it's, you know, we put a lot of strain on on the staff. A lot of demand, so.
We're excited to have Kelsey on board. As I think I mentioned to you before, Kelsey has a really neat combination in her background. And I don't, well, rather than me giving a little bit of background, can you give a little summary of your background? You know, both professionally and growing up here in Vermont, et cetera, so.
So I'm coming most recently from being an environmental and land use attorney based in Oxford, New Hampshire. I did that for four years. Before that, I clerked in the judicial system in New Hampshire. Went to law school at University of Colorado. And before that, I actually did a master's degree in geography up in Canada, where my work focused on the impact of sustainable or not sustainable mineral attraction development on an annual community in general. So some kind of very extreme examples of rural development and redevelopment and the impacts that can happen to be very, very big to be very, very small. A lot of books like that. My undergrad is in anthropology and geology from Brown in Rhode Island, but I grew up in Butcher. So after all that roundabout everything, I made my way back to Vermont and I was.
Very close to the law.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and my, my parents are happy to have me home. I have a two-year-old daughter and both Grandma and Grandpa are pretty, pretty pumped.
Yeah.
My husband and I and our daughter are back in Vermont. And I'm excited to make this shift from the legal side of, I would be the person who would be challenging and a lot of things on the legal side to being what I feel is often the more productive, the more productive side of planning, trying to work out problems and build things up instead of poking holes and trying to pull it all down. Excited to make that shift and I'm hoping all my, as Paul said, very background can help self-relicence.
You would.
I was, I was mostly at sort of the appeal of going back to the public CBA, but with CRB decisions in Vermont, doing those. But then also negotiating conservation easements and working with towns to update their, you know, solar and wind ordinances and all that stuff.
Great.
My daughter wasn't even there. I didn't go to the job that she was applying for, so she ran away to the circus. And it's the best job she ever had.
That's good, see. You're not looking back.
Well, absolutely fantastic. Oh, my gosh, I can't, I had no idea. I mean, we talked a little bit on the video a few weeks ago, but I didn't get the full background. I mean, that's fantastic.
You have your first come and useful.
Yeah.
Very useful. And even your research project you were talking about with like land use and disenfranchised communities. I mean, we've had a lot of discussions about that recently here. And we don't have a huge tribe presence in our city, but just kind of a lot of the same issues we've been talking about.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's particular nuances when it comes to First Nations and Indian issues in Canada, but a lot of the same principles are applicable towards all kinds of underrepresented disenfranchised communities, especially in rural, semi-urban.
Me fans, we're always saying, we want the advice of the lawyer. And not like in Vermont or Maryland. No, but you know, just kind of that.
That legal knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, the legalese, so.
We've asked all that many times.
And.
Legal counsel.
Right. Some, sometimes I pretend I am. No, I'm just kidding. No, we're, we're so excited to have Kelsey on board. As in, leading up to her joining us, she asked me if there was a sufficient variety of different types of challenges in South Burlington. And I said, that's one thing I can promise you, is that this is a dynamic community that is not afraid to push the envelope and try things. And I think, I hope you'll agree that in your first couple of weeks, you've seen that there is a very wide breadth of subject areas and things to really, that the community is so passionate about and really wants to make this the, you know, most livable, sustainable community in the state of Vermont, so.
Well, I think we could promise you, you won't be bored.
The first three and a half weeks.
And, and I think that's true. It's, it's a wide variety of topics that we're using to jumping around. I know we, we just kind of are finishing up a very large project, but even within that, there's just so many different topics and how things work together here in Vermont.
Yeah, and I did not grow up in, in South Burlington, but I, this was the big city for us, where my parents are about 45 minutes from here. I'm hoping that a little bit of, you know, historical background and what, what used to be, how it used to be in South Burlington and things like that. And I think, I'm, you know, I give directions based on, oh, that's where the people got. I hope some of that background will also come in.
Great.
Any other announcements?
I had two.
Okay, Monica, you go ahead.
So first of all, The Guardian just issued a reporter, an article that I was very excited to read. And I think they'd be very proud. Jane Goodall would be very proud of South Burlington. But Jane Goodall is working with the Society for the Protection of Underground Network. And it is a first ever mapping of underground fungal network. And that they're reaching out to like 10,000 different communities, but they're trying to officially map fungi connections. And with all, everything we've just done with habitat blocks, I was just so excited to hear about that. And think over time, it would be wonderful to learn about that here too, with everything we've just done. I think we will prove that we're connecting, we're protecting a lot of that here, and it's very valuable. So anyway, I'll, I'll share the article. I think I just sent it to Jessica very last minute. And the other thing I would like to say is, and learn more about, actually two other things. The streetlights here are just too damn dark. We know that there was an accident a number, a month ago now, which is amazing that Joel Stroud is still with us because he is every day defeating the odds. But it's a fair, still a very serious situation. And there are trap, there are sidewalk lights down like by the high school, down Dorset, but it is very, very dark. And it's dark here from four o'clock in the afternoon until whatever time in the morning. You know, it's just, this is a dark community and our lights are too dark. So I don't know how we can address that. I don't know what is within our purview. But Dorset and Williston Road as well. And so if there are suggestions for what we can do or what we as residents can do, I would like to learn because our streets are not safe. And then actually the third one I can bring up when we go through our plan.
Monica, I missed the very beginning of the first thing you mentioned.
I didn't guess that.
The tunnels, what kind of tunnels are we talking about?
That, my first point?
Yeah.
That Jane Goodall is, yeah. So it is the fungi.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the tracking, because that is where the crucial, and that is what the network of communication is. So we've done a lot of work with our habitat blocks to protect the trees. But when the roots don't reach each other, each other to share communication, the fungus does it for them.
Yep.
So they are mapping worldwide the, the underground network, they're calling it. So I, I look forward to learning more about it. And I feel really good about the work that we just did. Because I think it will be supporting a lot of our underground network.
Yeah, I think that probably ties to what you had brought up recently about soil health. You know, healthy soil is so much more likely to have. Other announcements?
Michael, would you like to give a little, a brief recap of last night? Or would you like me to?
No, it's fine. The Climate Action Task Force had its first meeting last night. And it was a very open and wide-ranging conversation. A lot of interesting ideas were floated. Paul and Melanie and, what's her name?
Anne.
Anne.
Yeah.
Sort of gave us an overview of, of the structure that we're going to be working with. At this point, for the laypeople, it, it looked a little bureaucratic, but that's the way it has to be because that's the way the CCRPC has to work within the framework. But as a kickoff meeting, I think there were a lot of good ideas talked about. And we've got a good, a good rapport between all the members. And I think we, we're at a good place to get cracking. I look forward to the next meeting. It's going to be difficult to find two evenings a week, a month, I mean, given that there's the city council meeting and these meetings, and I have a couple of others, which are probably movable, but for some people, and for Paul, and for accommodation, I think it's going to be quite, quite challenging to find two nights a month. Because once a month is probably not enough. So I'm really looking forward to the second meeting because we will get into the meat of it then.
Thanks for representing us.
Yeah.
And one recommendation that we would have for the planning commission is that perhaps at least monthly, there can be a standing item, as you've done with other times, to report back, provide any.
It's, it's my intent.
Request for information that are coming here. So if that's okay with all of you, we'll make sure to put that on the agenda, at least monthly as a formal item.
It's certainly my intention to report back here after each action, task force meeting. And maybe not formally, but probably a little more formal than this evening.
Well, I know in the past, we've had some, when there's stand, some committees where we've actually had, like posting an actual agenda item, like updates regularly. So I mean, we could do that just so it's warned. Or, I mean, I suppose it could be, it feels like maybe more than just the informal announcement we do.
Yeah, there may be times when there's feedback to share with Michael to, to bring back to the task force. There may be things that the task force asks of you as well.
Will be.
Certainly one thing for you all to be, just sort of beginning to think about is the timing of this climate action plan is actually really good with respect to the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan expires in just over two years from now. And so one of the early decision points is, is will that plan stand on its own? Will that plan eventually become part of the comprehensive plan? The direction that staff has given to the CCRPC is, let's assume that if not the plan, then a lot of the information from it will go directly into your comprehensive plan. So, you know, probably starting in the summer around when they wrap up their, their climate action plan, we'll begin ramping up the work of the comprehensive plan. And before that even, we're going to be reaching out to the various different city committees to begin their work of a check-in on what they've seen progress on, what they've seen not progress on from the last comprehensive plan. So that we can see, you know, what, what's been accomplished, what's to do, and then launch into the next update. So timing is going to be fantastic for that.
My sense is that it probably should stand on its own so that it can be easily changed and updated. For example, there was already a sense of, not disagreement, but what should be the priority? In, in the initial presentation, transportation was given as the, the transportation sector was given as the first priority. But there's a sense that I got from the discussions that building might be more appropriate because it can have a, possibly a bigger impact locally. Transportation has to be regional, can't just be South Burlington. You know, we have contiguous towns and cities that would have to be included in that. But building codes and that sort of thing can be very local, as they say, everything is local.
So when I was attending the affordable housing committee meeting, the day before the meeting, they were discussing, you know, what issues would they want to bring forth? And there was one that I brought up, and I can either discuss it now or later, but it looks like a number of committees, including the Economic Development Committee, are looking at, I'll call it a population study, but they're looking at, I guess the Economic Development Group is putting out a survey or something that's trying to find out what is bringing people to South Burlington? Who's, who's moving here? What are the demographics? Why are they moving here? But I'm interested in, I, I don't know if it was mentioned at the meeting, because I did offer it there the day before, in us really having a good understanding of expected population shifts here in South Burlington because of whatever societal reasons are bringing people in, but also of what we are today and what we may look like in 10 years. I mean, we are a very, New England as a whole is a very, has an older demographic. And naturally, in 10 and 20 years, it won't look as much like that. So I think that is when we're getting ready for comp plan and when we're looking at all these global environmental concerns, really understanding where we are with our population would be very helpful for us. So that getting professional experience, expertise would be, I think, a good investment for us and could benefit a number of the other committees.
Great. Well, and we can work certainly also with the school district that fairly regularly does. And just a couple of months ago, did a whole hiring a professional demographer to look forward several years. So that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think we're probably ready to actually move into the discussion of our.
Could I ask Paul one last thing? And that is to give us a little more information on the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Sure. So the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, the way it's done in our region is that there's a regional plan, and then there's a local chapter to the regional plan. Each individual municipality adopts their local chapter, and then together those become the regional plan that is submitted to FEMA. There is a, in past years, the entire process was run by the Trinity County Regional Planning Commission. Due to a whole bunch of bureaucratic reasons, the Vermont Emergency Management this year bid it out. There's, so there's a private company that's got the contract to do it. The CCRPC is involved with that, so they're doing the sort, the, the local piece of it. It's updated every five years, I believe. And it is our plan for mitigating all forms of, of emergencies. You know, whether it's natural, whether it is human-caused, whether it is pandemics, which was in the last one, just, everybody knows. So we started that process. I, our emergency management team has met with the consultants a couple of times. That's myself, our fire chief, who's our emergency management director, Public Works, and the police chief. Mostly right now, it's data gathering of what has been happening, et cetera, et cetera. The most common things that happen in our region are, of course, flooding and winter storms. I've relayed to them that we're very interested in looking at this through a lens of climate change as well, which they have, I asked them how they've been looking at this in other communities, and they said that there's a couple of different ways that either it gets treated as its own thing or more often, it is looked at as how much the other emergencies become more significant as a result. And so, you know, the likelihood of invasive species grows with climate change. The likelihood of more frequent flooding grows. That's probably the path that will be shown because it sort of focuses on the emergencies themselves. But with a clear discussion of climate change and its implications to it. So that's where we're at right now. I would be happy to keep the commission in a regular loop on that as well.
Assuming you would include drought, since that's been a serious problem here for the last few years?
Yes.
Who's the new, who's the consultant? Is it somebody we've worked with before?
No, it's a firm that specializes in this kind of work based out of, they've got an office in Boston, and I think I've been speaking with folks out of Illinois somewhere. So, you know, the, the power of Zoom is that they can be anywhere.
Will they be finished, like within that next two years, be done before the next comp plan?
They would, I believe the schedule has them completing sometime next summer. So it, it jives really nicely with the climate action plan and leads into your complimentary work of the, of the comprehensive plan.
That's great. Because I know the last time we did the comp plan, we had used some of the recommendations from all other committees.
Yep, yep. And we've already, you know, we've already started to place, in terms of the data gathering, the things that we're already doing, such as the action that is currently in front of the council to add the 500-year floodplains to being part of the, you know, what is looked at. And so that's in there as a active strategy for addressing, for mitigating future emergencies, so. You're very welcome.
Very good. That was a great catch-up. So anything from the public yet? Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is our review and discuss policies, priorities, and work plans for the remainder of fiscal year 2022. So that would be through June of 2022. We had an extensive packet with a lot of information. A summary of the priority ranking that we did individually was summarized. And then we also had input from the city council's priorities as well.
Yeah, so let me just give a quick introduction to that piece and then open it up for all of your discussion. And Kelsey did all the great work of assembling all this. As you know, the council has been beginning a process that Jesse worked with them in the summer and then into the fall, starting with a discussion with them about the various different roles and how there are, there's implementation, there's policy work, how they blend together between staff and council and commissions and committees. And then working towards developing a priority list of things that become the big things that the community is seeking to accomplish. Obviously, this was the very first year of it, and it's only a half year of it being done. I, Jesse's vision for it, which council is, I think, very in agreement of, and so are we, is to build this over time, to have this become something that really lays out a roadmap for the council, for staff, and for all of the city committees, and that it is built from the ground up and becomes something that allows all of the city's partners to be working, to be rolling in the same direction, which we're really excited about. So, yeah, so I guess I just want to give that as background. You know, this year, the timing was, I recognize a hair off in that your discussion tonight in the, in a future round would lead into the council's discussion. Mostly there's overlap, but there are a couple of areas just by nature of timing, and everybody is well aware of that. Jesse made the council aware of that. But, yeah. Hi, Paul.
Welcome.
Paul, this is Kelsey at the other end.
Hi. And we just, we were doing some catch-ups and announcements and just started the discussion on the priorities. So we didn't get very far into that at all.
Okay, so.
Does this tie in with the work plan priority that we each?
It does, yes. So maybe, Kelsey, is this a good place for you to pick up about your?
Or Kelsey, or any of you say?
Anything. I have a question, and that is, we've been kicking the TDR thing down the, kicking that down the road for God knows how long, and it doesn't appear anywhere.
It's the one that we all ranked almost the highest, number five.
I'm not, I'm not on that.
No, you're not. If you look on that one, it's, it's that first white one.
I looked at this package and I obviously missed it.
So, so Michael, the three green ones are the ones that we've already committed to.
Now, I, I obviously missed it, missed it.
The, the white ones are the ones that we essentially got to rank. And then, so the TDRs is in that first one that we did collectively rank as the highest. It's kind of in the words there.
Oh, whoa, okay, fine. No wonder.
Streamline incentivized development, redevelopment, and growth rate.
Ted also wanted to relay that, that was one, he wanted to make sure was very highly clear. So if it's not jumping off the page to folks, that's something we can certainly add. We, we are, staff and is, we're fully supportive of making sure that TDRs are addressed in the way that you want to address them immediately, so.
Yusha always makes things pop.
I mean, yeah, it's not surprising what is hidden in there.
Are into the name of the project, have another slash, so it's like really clear.
Yeah, I guess the only, I worked with the draft, the original draft that I received. And the reason, I did see your note, Michael, and your responses about prioritizing the TDR program. And I didn't, I decided not to pull it out because the TDRs, infill PUDs, NCD PUDs, there's several tools that can be used toward the same ends. And I felt that that, that first line, that did get five votes from commission member, from commissioners, kind of incorporates all of them and is a holistic approach to really deciding what, what does South Burlington want to get out of those tools? And then which, which of those tools reach the ends you want to reach? So that may be a robust TDR program, it may be a complex and robust infill development, redevelopment, PUD regulation. It could be both. It could be those plus something else. But those are all things that work towards the same goals. And so sort of left them together as a unified project.
Yeah, okay. I apologize for not, for not hunting in there for it because.
I, I was just going to say, do I need my microphone? I was just going to say, and I think I put this in an email to you when I sent him my work priority. I really feel that, that, you know, the NCD, the PUD work and the TDRs, we should really finish that up now. I, I really feel like we shouldn't take anything else on until we finish that. I mean, it seems like the logical extension of what we just finished. So I would really advocate for however long it takes us, we should really finish that. So I, I would really advocate for however long it takes us, we should really finish that work now.
I, I think Duncan is right. We already talked about this. We would do infill, NCD and TDR right up front because that's kind of the ending of the work we've been working, we've been doing the last three years. So, um, yeah. Some of you know and some don't that I have submitted the draft TDR ordinance to Paul and Jessica for, for them to look at or have legal look at. Because it might, it might shorten the process if it can, if a lot of it can be used. Some of it will be quite. What's the word I'm looking for? It, it will generate a lot of discussion, put it that way.
So I could ask another question real quick. I mean, not knowing what we're looking at, Paul. Um, the, the, at least two, I think sub-campus was in there somewhere, the, at least two PUD and the TDR. Realistically, what do you think a timeframe for accomplishing that would be?
Um, I think if you're talking about the things that, that fall into this category of the, um, the combination of TDRs um, being expanded into areas where you want to have additional receiving areas. Infill PUDs and/or NCDs, I, I think can be done in this, the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, one reason as Kelsey said that we felt it important to put them together is that they all are shades of accomplishing similar goals. And so it is possible that you will decide to say along Shelburne Road, a NCD is um, required or is optional above a certain scale. But below that scale, there's not a need for it. And you may decide that TDRs are something that can be applied on big or small properties to uh, enhance and uh, create opportunities for additional density in, in those areas. So they, they, they very well might work together. Um, I will also relay that the um, Affordable Housing Committee uh, is very interested in um, working collaboratively with you to support in any way that they can. Um, infill housing and have offered um, basically on the subject of TDRs and otherwise to um, do, to, to, to give you some extra horsepower to help you get to understanding the questions, understanding issues, concerns that have been raised about, you know, density in various different areas. So um, consider them a, a, an asset if you would like to make use of them. But I, I think it um, absolutely can be accomplished. You have a draft of the infill PUD. Um, we will have Sharon finish up the NCD and the TDRs. Really, um, Michael's done some great work on the legal end of it. The other part of it is really how do you want to use the tool? And there's there are to Kelsey and I some um, really interesting, not massively complicated ways to use it. And to accomplish many of your city goals. I guess the only thing I'd say about TDRs is it doesn't have to be in terms of receiving areas, you could choose to say, let's, let's look at these four or five areas where we could increase residential density, where there's a lot of agreement in the community and just do it. Um, Shelburne Road, for instance, or maybe the corner of um, Kennedy Drive and Heinsberg Road. Other areas that the TDR committee had looked at, like White Street um, could be a really interesting place, but you don't have to hold up doing the really, uh, the ones that are maybe more, more widely accepted. While you start a conversation with Chamberlain Neighborhood about what it would look like to increase density in the middle of their neighborhood. So it doesn't have to be a one-shot thing. It could be something that is growing over time. So uh, um, that, that's part of my thinking about uh, you know, being done in six or seven months. Is that it doesn't have to be every possible use of TDRs. It could be ones that are widely agreed on.
Yeah, I would tend to focus on the transit corridors.
Right.
You know, Dorset Street north of Kennedy, oh, yeah, and Williston Road and Shelburne Road. I mean, by the way, does anybody know what's going on at the corner of Swift and Shelburne Road where the Shell gas station, I think that is being taken apart.
Somebody owns the same guy that owns Pizza Hut owns that property.
Born, yeah.
Yeah, and born, yeah. It's all one.
Yeah, no, I think you know what he's doing.
Right now it's just being used as a staging area for uh, for the uh, Shelburne Road work that B-Trans is doing. So that's why there's vehicles there now, but.
So, um, along with this, um, if we're focusing on corridors though, I do think that getting the bike ped committee's involvement in safety is going to be paramount there because we should know if we're going to be putting more residential into some of these higher trafficked areas that we're also in advanced understanding how we can safely allow pedestrians and bikers to move. So that is us asking that committee to do some exploratory work. Um, it would be really nice if maybe that from our perspective was a, a prioritized request, knowing that we're about to uh, make some recommendations that put more uh, residential density on some areas that are extremely unsafe right now for pedestrians and bikers. So I think we might, if I agree with what Duncan's saying and, and Michael about making that our priority and maybe it's like what other pieces relate to that, that either we would need to do or that another committee might be able to help with and see if that happens to work with their priorities and their interests. I mean, we might have to create an entirely new bike path that's off of Shelburne Road, like buried back towards the lake or something by the railroad tracks to keep, to provide safe movement for people.
Well, the good news is, um, the, 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 the subjects like that um, have been thought about, so we're not starting at zero. There is a Shelburne Road corridor study that was done a few years ago that we can bring forward early in this. I know the bike ped committee has spent time at looking at what options could exist on Fayette Road as an, as an alternative for cyclists. So if the commission wants to, that's absolutely available to you as a starting point. And then if there's more work to be done, then to, to um, work with other um, committees on doing that. So.
And then the other thing I would add that I didn't really see in the document, um, but we did talk about putting together as I recall it, like a subcommittee as we did in Form Based Code for City Center. Um, to just be available and listen to, I mean, I'd even be willing to attend um, L, um, DRB meetings. In fact, I'd like to attend DRB meetings to listen in on any that will be using any of our new regs, just so I can listen to any issues that come up and the pros and the cons or just anything like that. But I do think that that would be very helpful to do and can help with our um, additional PUD work as well. So that when we come with those additional PUDs and TDRs, if there's any additional like adjustments that we might recommend for the other PUDs that we're seeing, that we can address those.
Yeah, to the point, so. I thought. I thought we had on the list, at least the one I think, maybe it just, maybe not, nobody ranked it. We, I thought we had said, maybe we just said it was a given that we would.
I think that there were some that you listed and I kind of assumed in one of our prior meetings, you said, we also discussed this, this and this. And I kind of thought they were definitively on the list because of the way it was.
I, I don't recall seeing that on the list though of, in our work priorities now. The Form Based Code Subcommittee was in there, but not.
So I don't know if we, how, how we.
I think that'd be a good idea to make it explicit. There is, uh, at the bottom of the list, there is, uh, not the bottom. The last item on the list is address specific comments from the draft LDRs, which is something that you would ask to do. And I, and I think Jessica is, is right that it's sort of embedded in the very first thing of completing the LDRs, but it's not said that, um, it's not said explicitly that there may be some corrections and updates to be done. And certainly we've been telling people that.
Yeah.
Um, as we said with the Form Based Code, the only thing we're certain of is that it won't be perfect at the beginning.
Right.
So do you think that, you know, just, it's not on the screen in a second, but like that very last item, it says address specific public comments on draft LDRs. You know, so those are some of the ones that we kind of identified that we want to kind of follow up on, we've already mentioned, but it feels like we might be maybe getting some supplemental or getting some part of their process or even after they're adopted. So could this maybe be expanded to say something like and you know, follow up post-adoption or, like, I don't know exactly how we had said that. We made a commitment to.
Is that everything that was on your list? I don't think so. On your, on your.
No. It's most of it though.
I think it was everything in the kind of vote or more than two votes, wasn't it?
There's everything that got more than, it got two votes or more, or was otherwise on the council priorities list, but what sort of wasn't on our voting list. Yeah, I had a separate list that I sent out after. So basically, um, it included.
Oh, the email you sent out the heck of, oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Email that just had a few things that we had done some kind of general head nodding that we could do a follow-up on.
This, I think soil was part of that, wasn't it? And that, that we would ask the natural resource committee to
Yeah, I, I do remember that.
So when we see natural resource, that's what I'm thinking is that they, we would put the request to them to consider the soil protection.
There were a few items that came up real quick since November twenty twenty three.
Yeah, there were things that, tasks that those committees could do rather than us.
And there were a few things that would be kind of core. So one of them was rename the LDRs.
About which I have a question.
Hold up, let me do three just. And then work on the NCD and infill PUD type, which we just kind of saw rose to the top on this list. Address adjustments and technical issues from the current round of edits, similar to how we had a Form Based Code Review Committee after adopting the city center LDRs. So I guess just because we had talked about it, it kind of seemed that, but I think we need to actually put it on the list and confirm. So we can tell the council and the public that we're going to do that. Exempt a parcel from master plan and subdividing only for conservation purposes. That is something like kind of a technical. And then to the Bike and Bed Ped Committee. Um, the, those related comments, uh, related to the street health. And then the natural resource committee exemption of natural resource restoration projects from certain standards. Pre-ordinance left large tree consideration, soil restoration, left destruction, conservation. So those were some of the comments that we had flagged to in the follow-up. So I think some of that is structured in this last thing, but it's.
Yeah, I read that on assuming that those were in and that we would figure out the others. So.
Well, why don't we update that last item there to reflect more of what Jessica just described and then we'll bump it higher up to reflect your um, collective head nodding on it.
But does it make sense to enact what Monica said and get a subcommittee on that? If we, you know, that could get that feedback and then bring us you know, action there. So just, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to streamline our.
Um, might I suggest as a first step, that if there are things that you'd like to assign out or request of other committees to work on, that maybe at a, you know, your next meeting or the meeting after that, you identify what they are, you make the formal request. And if there's things for you all to work on, you can decide whether you want to do it as a group or have a subcommittee on it. Um, and I imagine that some of the things might not be known for a couple of months as to what are either technical or policy challenges or things that the council may say, you know, we're adopting this, but we'd like for you to revisit next subject.
So I think how we did it with the Form Based Code at the time was we kind of collected items for maybe about six months and then, and then formed a committee once with kind of a, a list of items. So that might be different now, maybe if the council identifies a few things they want us to look at. So I mean, it could go differently than the.
Well, and is it appropriate for us to ask you guys to give us alerts if you know that there's a project that the DRB will hear that may, you know, they'll be using these new, I mean, everything that the DRB hears will be using them. But I'm just saying, if there's one in particular that we can learn from, is it appropriate for you to just kind of bring that to our attention?
Absolutely, yes. Yep.
Yeah, I would definitely listen in for some of that.
Yeah, I had a question about the, the name change and Paul had written somewhere that it's, would take a long time. It's complicated, time-consuming. Why is that?
I think, I didn't mean to say it was complicated or take a long time. It's uh, just. Uh, it was a, in the moment of your voting on it that night, uh, I recommended that it would be, you know, if you're willing to wait till the next round, just to make sure we're doing it correctly because there's cross-references to other ordinances and things like that.
What do you mean by the next round?
Whenever you do your next set of amendments. So.
Which could be.
Two months, six months, whichever, when, whenever you choose to next do a set of amendments.
I, I asked because I think it's, it's important messaging for the public.
Um, so it was one of the things that I was going to make sure to verbally point out for the city council is that the recommendation is here, but it, you know, so many different conferences, we're going to put it all over the ground.
I, 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 you know, I obviously I've spoken with Jessica about it many, many months ago and a couple of counselors and I'm sure Jessica's not going to have any trouble persuading them to go along with it because they like the idea. At least three of them.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't see it as a complex subject. It's just a little bit of a time consuming one. Because we'll want to make sure that we're thinking about any other ordinances, that kind of thing. So we're, you know, we've had some very, very silly legal challenges to us over the years. So somebody says, oh, well, you don't have land development any rate anymore. So therefore the noise ordinance is no longer relevant because da, 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 da. So, you know.
So I guess what I'm seeing on this list and in the, the the vote, the ranking vote, it looks like the streamline incentivized development redevelopment in built areas slash TDR is kind of our big project. We should really focus on one big project. And then we have more of a supporting role for the climate action plan. And the, the airport, the airport parkway zoning is that kind of a component of reporting on that, right? So those were the ones that ranked the highest for us.
One thing that we, um, well, so, so Kelsey did, um, and break it up into scale of project, which, which I thought was really helpful idea. Um, another thing that we did in here was to try to identify what the goal is for this year. So for some of these, for example, you've talked about east-west roads a number of times and you indicated when you lasted the official map that you would like to look more closely at east-west woods and southeast quadrant. At your next meeting, you're going to be seeing the annual request to the Tinning County Regional Planning Commission for funding on transportation studies. To me, to, to us, the way to advance east-west roads in this fiscal year is to formally put in a request for them to study it. That way you get a proper um, transportation analysis. You can do the, you can ask. We have time over the winter to draw up what kind of scope you would want, what do you want them to be looking at in analysis like that? And then the work would actually physically begin in the next fiscal year. But the task for this year is to ask for the, ask for the funding, lay out the scope. So I, I give that as an example of something that is a big project, but the work for this year is actually, you know, one meeting can be accomplished in a part of one meeting.
Yes, but I think that that's helpful because you're right, like some of these specific tasks, like your column, the fiscal year twenty twenty two column is really specific about what it is you're doing. So we might make many progress on some of these things. But fully adopt something. column is really specific about what it is you're doing. So we might make many progress on some of these things, but fully adopt something.
Um, so something else has come up since this, which is thankfully getting the approval for the bike ped bridge. Hooray! Which is huge. And I am wondering, I, I mean, obviously that's going to take a long time. That won't be happening in the next seven months. But are there some things that we should be thinking about of that particular area that can, you know, map out some better uses for some of that space?
Yes. So similar to the east-west roads, one of our recommendations, um, that we're likely to bring to you at your next meeting for funding request to the regional planning commission is a, um, a, a analysis and study of on each side of where it lands, how do we, what needs to be done to make it the most viable thing it can possibly be? Um, in terms of connections to existing infrastructure, um, possible changes of the official map, zoning, whatever needs to happen to make sure, you know, the last thing that anybody wants is a bridge that people feel is circuitous to get to and don't use. So for instance, yeah, so that, that was going to be on our recommended list.
So, you know, Michael's a good point. Is that something that we need to add to this list so it's officially?
I think.
Kind of on our plan to do some of that to start with? And, and I don't know how formal this needs to be. I guess that's another question. Like, you know, if we're just okay with.
And Paul, can I jump in for a second? The other thing that I, for, at first had a hard time keeping in my brain is this is literally a six to seven month work plan. So with, something with the bike ped bridge, just the funding just coming through and just starting with design and everything else. Is that something that needs to be added to the fiscal year, to this fiscal year plan? Or is it something that we want to make a note of to make sure it's on the list for 23, 24, as, as that project moves forward?
Right. And just submitting a funding request doesn't, you know, there's a lot of things that you do that don't fall into this list that are short, relatively short in the short-term items, you know, naming streets, uh, reviewing, uh, applications for solar development, things like that, that are.
But Monica, to your point, is that something we could ask the bike ped committee to focus on?
Well, I mean.
I, I, you know, knowing that that is a bike pedestrian bridge.
But I'm thinking more like when you look at the Staples Plaza, I mean, should we have zoning requirements that say no more one-story buildings? I mean, this whole area where this bike ped is going to be is, there's a lot of opportunity there to create a, a really amazing connection.
You're talking more overall.
Yeah. I mean, of course, the bike ped bridge has to be so freaking safe that nobody can ever get hurt on it in any possible way. But the area around it, I think there's such a huge opportunity for us to, and maybe TDR, I don't know what it is, but it just.
I, I think a lot of that has to do with what happens with the U-Mall and what we do with infill.
Yeah. And on the other side of, over by that whole Staples Plaza, I don't know what, what is happening back there, but.
There was a public, uh, public meetings and visioning, um, sessions on this and very much focused on this pedestrian bridge. And I think if we can find the, uh, the record of it.
Yeah. Oh, I was there. I was.
Uh, I was there too. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of information about where and how and, and what it should look like and what safety precautions should be taken. Um, so.
And where cafes can go, so you can have a cafe and.
Uh, yeah, it involved.
Opportunity here.
It involved U-Mall, it involved UVM, it involves the Staples Plaza. Yeah. A lot of information in that visioning session.
So I agree, that doesn't, maybe it doesn't fit in this next seven months, but knowing what the potential could be, we wouldn't want to miss a window. So.
I think we will find that the public wanted yesterday. Because it was a very high priority with them and it still is with the bike bed, pad community.
So Kelsey, you said you had some ideas about, um, like, do we need to formally adopt this? Or what do you think is the best action for us right now? I mean, we've had a few comments that are going to be, most people still have additional comments. Paul, did you have any thoughts or, you know, wanted to see this?
The only question I have is, um, I would like someone to catch me up on the, someone to catch me up on form-based code. There was a committee, I don't really know what happened and there are proposals to make changes in the form-based code. Is that right?
Yes, so.
So I just don't know anything about what's happened with form-based code at all.
Yeah. Um, so the, there were a few items that came up that were pretty, um, important for sort of immediate action about a year and a half ago. Though the planning commission set up a subcommittee to look at those. They addressed the sort of immediate, immediate ones. Um, but there are, there, there's a list of some additional ones that, um, are were brought forward either by the private sector or by staff in working through the regulations. Um, there's some newer information as of the last couple of months that our, um, project director, Alana Blanchard, has been, um, she works often with property owners, uh, to explore ideas for how to, um, uh, coordinate on city center. So there, there's work to be done there on exploring either adjustments or possible redesignation or some updates to something that's now five years old. So that's, that's the super quick synopsis of it. And I can give a much more detailed of what the actuals are.
Is the subcommittee still active?
They are not active at the moment. Um, I think you would probably reconstitute them if you were to choose to do that. I think they, they finished some basic topics. Um, and then the pandemic hit and, um, so. Yeah.
And then we had done something similar, you know, four years ago, just right after the adoption, maybe starting six months after the adoption. There were just some relatively minor technical things, some things about, um, the spacing, some materials items. So there was kind of that, it was actually two rounds of a form-based code, a subcommittee working on comments.
Right. So, so, and one of the larger ones, for example, is the subcommittee as well as, um, members from the private sector were really interested in, um, could there be a ability to have sort of an overall approval, essentially a master plan? And what was decided at the time was the city's working on a master, on master plan set, standard, let's see where those land and could those be uh, adjusted to work with the form-based code. Um, so now you have a draft master plan and you'd be able to take a look at that. Um, something to give a little more ability to look not just on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but what happens on, on the whole, which is common in a form-based code. So.
Elon has had something recently too, uh, with changes to the TIP. Is that right?
Uh, yes. So there are some updated TIP financing and there's been some discussion about possibly, um, adjusting the boundaries, but that will be up to the legislature on that part of it.
Are they asking to get the U-Mall parcel in there?
Um, there's been some discussion about it.
That's what it is, including the U-Mall in the, uh.
It's not right now.
I thought U-Mall was included.
I, yeah, I thought.
They're in the form-based code, but they're not in the TIP.
They're not in the TIP.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Can I, um, ask a clarifying question back to, um, I, I think I heard you say that in the next meeting, we, or the future meeting, we'll be looking at what priorities might we ask of other committees, right?
From the list that you did.
That's right. But there was, um, there was one thing and it might be for other things as well. And I, I, it seemed that what we wanted to get feedback on before daring to make a decision on the draft regs was really more from the development community is what I understood. And I don't know what committee that would be there for. And the example I give is, you know, everyone knows how strongly I feel about, um, every residential unit having private outdoor space, whatever the size. And we did agree to put it in, but it was private or semi-private, which at least that's there. But, um, the reason for not putting private in all was because we wanted to get feedback from, I believe the concern was getting more feedback from the development community or something. And it was kind of a late in the game request. Are there, where would that fit in? I mean, it wasn't something anyone could rank because it wasn't on the forum. And I don't know if others feel as strongly, but if, if, if there are some things that we feel we didn't go as far with that we were interested in and we can't, we don't have a committee to send it to, who do we? What do we do? Do we discuss it? Or is there a way to formulate a committee of people that you're thinking would be helpful for those kind of questions?
That be economic development? Or is there anyone on that committee who would have that?
It just seems like it's develop, I mean.
No, but is there anyone on the economic development committee who's in the development world that would have insight on that?
I mean, I think to your specific question, Monica, in that, in that instance, that might be a place where the affordable housings, um, offer to help look at infill issues.
And Patrick O'Brien.
And Patrick O'Brien. And, you know, that might be a place, I actually, or Kelsey and I just last week previewed that, that kind of question may be exactly something that you ask of them to look into.
Reach out to people and yeah.
So, you know, that would be a way of increasing some of your horsepower also.
That's a good idea. Okay. So we're, we'll just, that, that's the kind of thing we'll discuss in the next meeting?
Yes. And I think that falls under the incentivized development redevelopment in built areas because that's really kind of those areas that you're speaking about largely for that scale.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I did have one question on, on the airport thing. That, that subcommittee, you guys haven't met, have you? No, that kind of got sidelined for a while.
I'm going to let Kelsey answer that.
Yeah, I'm in the process of just confirming with the task force members that they're still interested and they still have the capacity to do it. Because people who could have done it over the summer may not be in the same position now. I've gotten confirmation from a good number. I think I have four, maybe five of the original people. Um, but there's still a few that I'm waiting on. And I've been back in touch with the consultant we, we were going to work with and she's back on board. And we had one meeting with the, um, with the airport, just to make sure that they were still interested in, in doing that work and they are. So that's all moving forward. I'm hoping possibly to have a, a first meeting in December. Um, but at this point, it may get pushed into early January.
Okay. And you'll be asked, uh, I think it's on tonight's agenda to update the timeline for completion because you did ask for it to be completed this past fall. So just to make sure that everything is sort of above board in the way that we, you know, if you're going to set timelines to update your, your policy on that. So. Good. Um, so if, if you are comfortable with this broadly speaking, then, um, then yes, um, a motion to, uh, adopt this as your broad work plan would be, would be welcome.
Would we then work through this in the order that, in the priority order that is listed?
I think the idea is that for the most, I think the idea is that the, for the most part, yes. But, you know, some of these things have just like a tiny task for the year. So, you know, it might wind up three meetings from now, just because it's that one little task and, and then. But I think, you know, that big one with the TDRs and the NCD is probably one we'd be working on consistently throughout with the other little ones kind of fit in. Is that, does that mesh with what you were thinking, Paul and Kelsey?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. And there are some that are, and I tried to shade it in a very light gray, but it's sort of unseeable. But the, um, there are some tasks that the planning commission is in more of a support role to other committees or other task force. So you don't know exactly when that will come back to the commission. It could be two meetings from now, it could be 10 meetings from now. So it can't, the work plan can't be approached in a strictly chronological order, but roughly that would be the, the goal.
Yeah. I mean, my, my two cents is if we know that we hope to get through the majority of this in seven months, that you guys get, just get us to the end goal and, and in whatever, you know, increments you need along the way, you know?
Yeah. And, and what makes sense, you know, I'm looking at like, um, engage the economic development committee for initial review of industrials. I mean, we might need to ask them pretty soon so then they could go do it. So you know, kind of fitting things in where it makes sense, like you're saying, Monica.
Before, before we make any motion on this, I, I made some comments about our role and staff's role in talking to UVM about their future plans. And I feel very strongly that this is, given what we've heard from UVM, threats of legal action and that sort of thing, that this is something that has to be dealt with at the higher level, that it has to be city council with the top management of UVM. And it shouldn't be something that's on our work plan at this point. Contrary views?
Well, there's two, it seems like there's two separate, they've had a plan with their ideal uses and then separately they have specific comment about our draft. I would still be very interested in just knowing if they have, you shared their most recent, but that was from a number of years ago. And it sounded like they had an additional, a new.
They're working on a new plan, yes.
New plan, right. So I mean, so I would be interested in seeing that. It's very helpful. I mean, like example, that rotary on Swift and Spear is going to be a challenge if they're working to make that corner, um, in the Wheelock Barn, a, a bigger community use, you know, that's going to, so I think it's helpful for us to see what their, what their visions are separate from, you know, the, the challenges or the, um, that they will have with our regulations.
Yeah. Monica, their plans are probably could get at them on the, on the university website.
No, I'm just saying, when there's a new plan, I, I think we should still be aware of that because that would be helpful to our work. Separate from what you're saying, I agree, the higher level of the, the issues that it might have with our specific regulations.
That's all I'm saying. Yeah. So with that, with that reservation, I would move that we accept this work plan and work through it chronologically to the extent possible.
Okay, um, I'll second that. That sounds, you're going to.
I, well, but it's not, we just got done saying we're not going to do it chronologically.
I know, the chronological part, we kind of.
We all had a senior moment there. All right.
You need to say chronological. Okay. I know you said chronological.
Chronological may have been the thing that threw us off, Michael.
Okay, to the extent possible. We don't have to do it.
Prioritize to the extent possible.
Yep. Or leave that out. If you're uncomfortable with those few words, I can rephrase it.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess what you, okay, yeah, I, I, I still second it. I think it's fine. Any discussion?
I mean, I would just say the goal is getting to the end line. So rather than chronological, I don't care what order you bring it to us that we get to the end line, the finish line. So I would support, um, the motion without the, um, the preference for the chronological or prioritization.
Wait a minute. Prioritization is what we want. Isn't it?
To get to the finish line.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get to the finish line. It doesn't mean.
When you say chronological, Michael, do you mean in order that they're listed on this piece of paper? Or do you mean chron?
In the order that is, the priority that is, that is listed in. All right, that, that makes.
But like we said, like, like the thing that's the biggest priority, we're going to be discussing in every meeting until we get to the end. It's that big. So they're naturally going to bring in some smaller things that might be at the bottom of the list with one vote, but we all know we need to do it because the city council, that might fit in in our second meeting. I don't care when it fits in, as long as by the end of our seven months, we've met our needs, our goals here. And I would prefer that the staff has the chance to tell us what needs to happen when, so that our priorities can be met at the, at the seven-month mark.
The, the motion is not intended to imprison us. We can change things as we go, but we should try to go with the, what I'm trying to get at is that we should try to go with a priority. We've all worked so, so hard to develop and Casey has consolidated into a priority list. So.
So Michael, do you think you'd be willing to maybe reword that a little bit? Um, so, because chronological. So, because chronological actually could mean a lot of things, because these are actually not necessarily listed one, two, three, four. So maybe chronological is not the best word. Maybe you could say focus.
In the priority to the extent possible.
Focused on our priorities to the extent possible, would that be?
That's fine. The motion is so amended.
Okay, now I'll second the amendment. Okay, any other discussion?
Um, just to, uh, in, embedded in that will be the update to the last item on the list to be a little more clear about what you talked about this evening. And also up top where it talks about streamline incentivized to make TDR, addressing TDRs more prominent. That's what we heard this evening on all that.
Yes.
Okay.
She's already got that.
Okay, any, anything else?
Are we voting?
Well, I was going to see if anyone wanted to say anything else before we voted. Okay, then on favor of the list, aye.
Aye, aye.
Any, okay, that was all of us. Very good. So our priorities have, um.
Oh, and that you're going to look, you're going to think about the bike pad bridge, just if there is anything that would have to fit in here or not.
Yeah, I think, I think what you'll see is, is a funding request.
Funding and then?
Through the Unified Planning Work Program. So that'll, that'll come to you very quickly.
Okay.
Then, I'm sorry, so the population review though, which won't be on here, is that something you'll, that need to, I mean, I don't know if it has to happen in seven months, but just.
One of the items on the list here is to lay out the framework for how you want to update the comprehensive plan. I think that, um, that would be a good time for that.
Thanks. Okay, anything else on this item? Or are we ready to move on to the next agenda item? Did you have anything else that you wanted to accomplish here? Kelsey or Paul?
Okay.
Okay, then we can move on to the street name request, one of my favorite things.
Was there anything in particular from the city councils? All the documentation we had that you wanted us to be particularly aware of? Sorry, I thought that was.
No, so we, we included the city council priorities, just so that you had that full document and the full explanation from Jesse, uh, just as background information. In the work plan itself, there's a column that says, I'm trying to scroll back to it, but in council priorities, it's that third column, but, and if it has a Y, I found it in the council priorities, either in verbatim language or something very, very similar. Um, and there were just a handful that were on your priority list that didn't quite have an analog in the city council, which is why some of those ended up a little bit lower in the priority list for this fiscal year.
And I think conversely, a couple of things that were identified by council or other committees that I think you had also identified, but, um, you know, might have gone a little bit higher in the list were the council, as you know, did request that all city committees and commissions reserve time for climate action plan work. You also voted for that, but that was something that was specifically from them. And then, um, on your list was looking at industrial areas of the city. And I know that's been something that's been on a list for you. That's something that the economic development committee had also been really interested in and the council was interested in. So we put that in there as, um, engaging the economic development committee for an initial look at that, um, to make use of their strengths there and accomplish something that's been on your list, but hasn't been able to rise to the top for a while.
Okay, then on to number five, the street name request for the Burlington Tennis Club. They gave us three options. Do we have, is, are the notes here an actual staff recommendation to not go with one of the ones that have club written in it?
We would recommend that you not go with the ones that have club in it, just because Corey Hill Club is so nearby and it's what it's been known as for, for a very long time. And if there was ever an emergency, the Corey Hill Club used to have tennis courts, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, the only one from that list that we think would work would be Tennis Court. If you were so inclined to do that. Uh, this is really just a driveway into what has been existing for a very long time. They have more than one building and so under 911 rules, they're supposed to have not a 37 and a half address.
And just one more comment, Marla Keen, the Development Review Planner, also does the 911 addressing in South Burlington. She forwarded me a list of other street names that are in neighboring or nearby towns that use the word club or tennis. And there are several clubs. There's four streets in Bolton, there's one in Burlington, one in Charlotte, one in Colchester, um, and one in Williston, but there's only one that uses the word tennis and it's in Milton. So I think the implication is that Tennis Court is a more unique name from the E911 perspective.
Tennis Court?
Yeah.
It's cute. It's just.
Works, but they play tennis on a tennis court, not on the street.
Correct. It's, it's a, you don't have to accept it. It's a little bit of a play on words, because court is an acceptable name of a street also. But if you don't want it to be cute, you can also say, go back to the drawing board.
I should, yeah, we should tell them to go back to the drawing board and knock a road through from Staples Plaza, which is right there.
Any, any objections?
Is that their, was their choice Tennis Court one of their choices?
Yeah.
Fine.
I'm fine with Tennis Court.
Okay, with it.
Um, okay, so I think we need to actually have an official motion.
Make a motion that the Burlington Tennis Court can name its entrance street Tennis Court.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, on favor of Tennis Court?
Aye.
Right? That was unanimous, five zero. Great. Um, updated timeline for the Airport Parkway Kirby Road Extension Rezoning Task Force.
Kelsey already.
Yeah, so I, I explained sort of where we are, but we do, there needs to be an official action to update the timeline. I believe the previous deadline was something like September 17th. So clearly that needs to be changed.
Well, what's wrong with September 17th?
Unless you have a time machine.
We just missed it.
Yeah.
Do, um, and that's the only change, that we, the, we don't need to change the people or anything?
As far as I know, we don't need to change the people. I've, as I said, I've heard back from several pre, of the previously appointed members. I have no reason at this point to believe that the, the original, the original authorization didn't include specific names. It said, you know, from this committee or from that committee, kind of generalized categories. At this point, I don't see any reason that that needs to be changed. But, you know, if that needs to happen, I can come back in two weeks and do that.
We, Monica and Paul, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
How long do you think it will take?
Cause I had a conversation with the consultant, Brandy, this morning and it seems like she would like to have her work done definitely by March. Um, I don't know if the task force would then spend additional time after March or if that's also a good timeline. But as I said, it also takes, it's also a little bit of a question of when it can actually start up again.
Is the airport fully staffed now? I think they had a, a bit of a staffing change.
So the director is still, I believe, an acting director, Nick Longo. But I haven't heard anything about him, about somebody being hired above him or anything like.
But, but we, it's good use of everyone's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met with Nick and their engineer and they were very eager to be, um, to advance and to be fully participant, participatory in this work with us.
Great. Do you have a suggestion for the timeline?
Um.
End of the fiscal year or?
No, that, that feels too short, just seven.
It was, so it was originally authorized, if I'm not getting my dates mixed up, in April or so of this year for a finished date of September.
It was originally going to be five months. So I think if you were to say end of May, that would be, um, you can always adjust it. But, um, you know, channeling might, uh, your former member art be ambitious? And if it needs a little more time, then it can. But I think that gives you a good guidepost for encouraging them to get, to get the project wrapped up.
So we'll wait to hear from you on that stuff, I guess.
Just for my.
When we're.
Curiosity, what are the complexities of this? Because when we reviewed it as a commission, it seemed like it was easily doable.
I don't expect it's necessarily that complex. The complexity is likely just a matter of, um, it's a neighborhood that's had a lot of change in it and giving the opportunity for people to feel as though they get to be involved in it is really the complexity that we're trying to reset the relationship with the airport in a collaborative manner and not, um, say, you know, oh, something was done in one meeting, whether it's a great idea or a terrible idea, that it's being properly done so that people have reports.
I'm having a, a flashback though, that, I mean, we know that the economic development committee has also been very keen to have us look at that whole area again.
That was my, that was my question.
And I know that this particular purpose on this, for this task force is not that, but I remembered these kind of two things were happening at a similar time. And the idea was great to establish a task force, kind of get, create this community conversation so that, like, that's, uh, that's not on our work project.
Right, but remember, this is just a seven month work plan. Our thinking on this was if, if there can be some good trust and a good product developed here, then come May, when you're redoing your next work plan, maybe there's an opportunity to think about next steps and the, of the part of your comprehensive plan that you sort of left white between the airport and, and the neighborhood to take on as a next step. To, you know, build from a growing relationship. And if, you know, if, if it didn't go well, then you're not locked into something that, um, is, you know, biting, biting off more than everyone was prepared to chew at the beginning, so.
And this, the rezon, this particular rezoning request is very limited in geographic scope. It doesn't cover the whole area where houses were removed. I believe everything is east of Airport Parkway, if I'm remembering that map correctly. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a fairly narrow strip that we're dealing with in this particular request. And it does not preclude discussions about the whole area and a forward-looking plan comprehensively.
That was going to be my question, but you kind of answered it for me, Monica.
So you're looking for a motion to update the completion timeline?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we update the completion time for the Airport Parkway Kirby Road Extension Rezoning Task Force to.
Right, end of May?
End of May.
October, March, April 31st, May 31st.
May 31st, 2022.
Second.
Michael, you're involved with all of them tonight. I want to second this one.
Okay, Monica one.
I'll meet you outside.
Any discussion, discussion on the motion? Okay, on favor?
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, unanimous pass. Uh, we have meeting minutes from October 26th and November 2.
I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of November 2nd, 21 and.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's October 26th and November.
Right, October 26th, I was scrolling up to get to the date, October 26th.
Yes, somebody's going to second it and then we can have a conversation.
You want to have the conversation before you get seconded?
Should second it first before you have a discussion.
Okay, so, did somebody second that?
No.
No.
I'll second it. Okay, discussion?
Yes. I have a lot of questions about it. The first question is, why is it up to us to, to read this and find all the mistakes? Um, in the minutes of October 26th, on page one, the list of those present in person and/or online is not complete. Evan Langfeld is listed twice. Rick Dahlstrom is listed as B. Bellstrom. Kevin Fun, I mean, K. Funwurt is misspelled. The correct spelling is W. O. E. R. T., not the, not a wart, W. O. R. T. Now, Mr. Jarvis should be Ms. Jarvis. And then, there's a whole slew of rec, a record, a record of what was said by who. And I started to go through it and decided to give up. Um, also on page three, uh, on the sixth paragraph, Mr. Dahlstrom is listed again as Mr. Bellstrom. And then I need, for me, I need some clarification on item, on page six. Can you find it? Six, item D. agrees in the village area, the commission asked that where there is a conservation PUD required, development on a parcel that is smaller than a conservation PUD. I'm assuming that means smaller than four acres, right? Um, the question is whether to set a maximum of four or keep it at eight units per acre. Eight units obviously would be with TDRs. So does it apply, it applies to, to parcels that are four acres or, or less in the SEQ VR district, right?
Uh, village residential and village commercial, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Does the six dwelling units per acre cap for the SEQ apply to these districts as well?
Uh, if somebody were to choose to be a conservation PUD in that district, then yes, it's an option for them.
But this, these are not conservation PUD because they're less than four acres.
Right. So, oh, oh.
So does, does the cap apply? It's, I'm not sure.
So if this is below four acres, then the, then it would not be a PUD and so it would be the underlying zoning, which allows for up to eight units per acre. But that's, that's gross, not net.
Yeah. SEQ VR and VC districts, 1.8 units per acre, six dwelling units per structure. That's the underlying. That's under 905 D1C allowable density for development. That includes a transfer of development rights. So I'm not sure we got it right. It says in the SEQ VR and SEQ VC sub districts, 1.8 dwelling units to the acre and six dwelling units per structure.
Uh, we will go back and take a look at it. I, I'm comfortable that that's what was said in the minutes. But we will go back and see if it was correct in terms of what came out of it.
Right, what's in the draft, yeah.
Yeah.
Then, uh, look, on the minutes of November the 2nd, page one, my wife's name is spelled without an H. So also present should be Tompkins, K.I.N.S., not Tompkins. Um, page three, paragraph seven, line five, were should be where. Page four, paragraph five, line two, usage shouldn't be two words, one word. And in the penultimate paragraph, line two, not should be another.
Not should be what?
Another.
Another.
We got not instead of another.
I missed where that last one was, Michael.
Page four, second last paragraph, line two.
Oh, yeah, Monica said that, if another agency.
Um, it's quite time consuming. I note, I, I made a note for myself that somebody, staff should read and correct the minutes before asking us to approve them.
These transferred, read from Sue's notes?
Uh, yes.
They're transposed.
Okay, we can certainly do that. I guess one comment that I would make to you all, to, uh, to your comments about the, the various individuals' comments. The, the breadth of the minutes is really that which you choose them to be. So, um, under, under state law, minutes are only required to say who is present, what the votes were, what the agenda items were.
Yep.
If you feel that Sue is be, has, is being overly voluminous, then we, we can certainly dial that back. And that's something that, you know, the council, the DRB has, over time, bodies have said, oh, it's a little bit too much, we'd like a little bit less detail or more detail. These are...
These aren't too bad. We've had some older minutes which were voluminous and much too wordy. And then, I mean, obviously Sue has to deal with, with us and, and must use her best judgment. But she uses the word felt, that Jessica felt, instead of Jessica stated or said, or Michael felt.
Yeah.
Those are the kinds of things that just makes them more, uh, on point, on, on point, sorry.
So all the meetings are recorded, correct?
Yes.
So I would assume that the electronic recording is the official recording of the meeting.
The official one is the minutes under state law.
See, that's crazy, really.
We do post them. I will say that it is handy to have a written one, at least something brief, because then you don't have to be going through three hours of video
Right.
to at least find something. But you're absolutely right. If there's ever a question of what's actually been said, I look to the written minutes quickly to see which agenda it was on. And then I go to, you know, hour, two hour and 16 minute to actually listen to what somebody said. And that's why we download all of the videos and post them to YouTube so that they are permanently available.
Yep.
I will, if I can mention something about people's names, try to understand some of those names when people mutter them. It's very hard. One of the things the DRB does, Marla sends me a list that she compiles of who attended the meetings. And presumably she's spelling them correctly as to what people have said. But I cannot understand half of what people say sometimes because they do not know what a microphone is for.
Yeah, we should do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we, um, I think, you know, some of the meetings, people sign in and they write their own name down. We haven't, we haven't really done that.
Yeah, and I never see that list. And half the time their handwriting isn't legible anyway, but that's another problem. But...
Well, and on that note, too, we, we can be, we can remember that our drafts are publicly posted prior to us approving them. So they're always out for anyone in the community. But how do they know that? I mean, we can help just in general. But, but anyone who attended or is curious can always look at the draft and make a comment to anyone.
Okay.
But if there is something as clerk that I can do to help with this, although this, these, these minutes were a lot, so.
Um, the only other thing I've note is that, um, because some people attend online, many people write their names, but some people don't. So it might just be a phone number, it might just be Philip or something like that. And so if we don't know a full name, we're not going to put somebody's, just their first name in there or a phone number or something, so. But if they speak, then certainly they have to say who they are and, and we'll, we'll get it that way.
And the hope is that they say it so that it's intelligible.
I don't want to take up any more of our time on this, so.
Um, okay, I did.
So I would adjust my motion to, uh, it sounds like there was one, to accept, uh, Michael's comments as noted and that Paul will also follow up on the issue from the November 3rd.
No, that was October.
Was it the October? Okay.
But that's not an error of the minutes, just to be clear, it's an item.
A, a question, right.
Yep.
And if Paul confirms that the minutes are representative of what was said, then, um, and accurate, then we would approve them. Or do we...
Well, I'm comfortable that, that, that paragraph is, my reflection is that it was correct. I think Michael's comment is, is the, are the draft regulations correct? So I think the minutes are correct.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? All right?
All right.
With those corrections?
Yes, unanimous pass.
Um, to that point, you have a stack of minutes from before that, that a couple of members wanted to be, take some time with. Do you, what would you like to do with that?
How's that going?
I thought we did that. I thought we, we never did that.
Monica, I think you had some ques, some issues on those.
I think Monica had some questions. I'm sure Michael did, too.
I don't even remember now. That was so easy ago.
We can, we can certainly do a check on the spelling of names to make sure that we're correct on those ones. Um, can we bring these back to a meeting of yours? We can send them out in advance, but I'd like to get them cleaned off the deck so they're not...
Yes.
...2023 saying, what about, what happened in 2021?
Yes, let's do that.
We really remember them, yeah. I do remember seeing that. Yeah, you can't, you can't do that.
I'm pretty sure I didn't do that.
Okay.
I, I, I did, I did remember seeing that thing, wow.
So...
Well, Paul and I share a first name, so maybe it was...
Maybe, maybe it was Paul, I guess, all right.
We'll take a look.
Blame, yeah, blame, blame this guy.
What did I say?
Whatever was attributed to me.
I, I'll take them right.
So review...
How about at least five or six meetings watching those meetings? Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be...
Okay.
It's... Michael, you're, you know, you're so funny. You're like, I don't want to spend on anything except for my comments.
That's it. You're done.
Can we go back to the...
Other people can have a comment.
Where they were all listed and then we can approve them?
Not, yeah, but not right now because we don't have them.
Good night.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, move on to other business, which is our meeting schedule, which was very helpfully sent out with the Wednesdays pointed out for us.
Really noted.
Which is great.
Because we wouldn't show up otherwise.
Any, any questions on the schedule or issues with it?
Yes, I didn't, I couldn't find that email message.
Oh.
Um, so what are the dates?
Um, well, they all start in January, so, um, we...
Start in January.
Yeah, so this is, um, for next year, so starting in January.
It was one of the emails that Kelsey sent us.
Yeah. Paul, it's every three days for the first six months after that we're going to...
No, it's our, it's just our meeting schedule. But there's been a few that have been identified where we'll move it to the Wednesday. So they gave us the whole year.
What's our December schedule?
Your December schedule is, uh, two weeks from tonight on the 14th.
Okay.
And that's it. That's the, the commission decided last year to not have your meeting in the week between, um, leading to New Year's, so.
Think of the Christmas break.
I, and I think we should do that again this coming year. I do see December 27 as listed here as a meeting date for 2022.
I included as, as what would have been that regular meeting date, but there's a note next to it that says traditionally there is no second December meeting.
Okay, so that, that'll, we'll take that off.
I didn't want to take it off preemptively.
What are the key dates we should be watching for, for city council, looking at the draft?
Yes, so I was just gonna get into that. So we do not have a meeting on December 6th, but, um, I know at least Paul and I are gonna attend the city council meeting and give a presentation on our draft.
That's next Monday.
That's next Monday.
Is that their first in-depth conversation about these after seeing them from us? Yes, it's their first in-depth conversation. They've had a, um, they had a, their last meeting on November 20th or whatever it was, they, um, each councillor indicated areas that they would like for Jessica and my presentation to focus on, questions that they might have. So that's as far as they've gone. They didn't get into a discussion or debate. Uh, so their schedule is that on the 6th, it'll be a presentation from, uh, from Jessica and myself on what the, what's contained within there, the areas that they asked to focus on and the things that you as a commission asked Jessica to relay of, um, areas of where not every commissioner was in, in full agreement, but ultimately decides not for it. Um, council will, um, also be getting some, uh, legal briefings that evening, uh, for their request um, on the 20th of December, so their next regular meeting. That's scheduled for them to have a discussion about, um, uh, if needed. But, um, we laid out a schedule where they can discuss issues that they may have, things that they would like staff to be spending some time on or not. January 3rd, right now, is scheduled to be the public hearing. The, uh, after that, they will likely choose, um, but it's up to them to do it the same way that you did it, which is to just listen on the 3rd. And then after that, they would have the ability to either adopt or if they choose to make changes, to make changes, warn a new public hearing if they're substantive. That would need to be re-warned and held. Um, we've, we've tentatively looked at the, their first meeting in February to do that. If they make substantive changes, um, a, you will be notified of that and you'll be asked to review your report to see if there's anything that, uh, you need, you would like to change in your report of its consistency with the comprehensive plan. So that's a, that's a requirement under state law.
One of the things that they, you mentioned, there's a few areas they wanted to focus on, one of the...
Uh, councillor Chittenden wanted to understand the conservation PUD requirement in the southeast quadrant. Wanted to understand possible impacts related to the grand list. There were a few questions that Sandy Dooley had, um, posed the email that, uh, he asked to be addressed as well. Uh, councillor really asked to, uh, look at, uh, better understand the four, what's the universe of four-plus acre lots? Uh, how much development can occur on those? Councillor Cota wanted to know how much land that is currently developed would be conserved. Councillor Barrett, uh, agreed with the other people's requests. And councillor Emery wanted to understand the relationship between what was ultimately adopted in the, or approved by the planning commission with respect to habitat blocks versus what was in the Arrowood, uh, recommendations. And what, um, what does the term walkable generally mean, um, in a traditional neighborhood? So those were my specific lists of items to hit on. Just a couple of things.
Well, I think they also just wanted a, a general overview as well.
Yeah.
Like the, in a... Okay, so I'll be at that.
Are you guys gonna have a packet that goes into their agenda? Packet pre, prior, or will you just be sharing it with them that night?
I think it will likely... We're, we're gathering a lot of piece of information from outside people, so it'll depend when we get them.
We've also...
Some of this mapping stuff we're having the RPC do for us, updating tables and numbers and depending on whether I get them on Thursday or Monday, that will depend on whether it's in the packet.
Can you share the package with us?
Certainly. Um, and if it is presented at the meeting, well, certainly it'll be posted and, and we'll send it out to everybody.
Thank you. And in the meantime, they've been directed to look at the spotlights as well to start kind of getting themselves up to speed also. Um, so are one of the, okay, Paul?
Can't make it on the 14th.
I will not be there either, so that's two of us. Bernie said he can be there and will chair. Anyone else?
Don't think I have any conflict.
Okay. So five, so five people, yeah. Very good. So the other thing we added was in-person versus remote format for meetings. How are people feeling? Or do we want to take a poll at some future time?
Right now, I'm fine with in-person, but that could change, as we all know. I think we could see what happens and maybe address it at our next meeting.
Well, maybe as a precautionary measure, we should plan to have our December 14th meeting online unless we learn something between now and then about, about the, about the Omicron variant being more benign than we think it is. There, there's a lot of conflicting information out there about transmissibility and how sick it makes people. They are talking about using the Merck and Pfizer pills as treatment, but I'd rather not get anything than have a pill.
Okay, well, I am, like I said, gonna be missing the next meeting. So I feel like I, I don't, I'm gonna miss the next meeting. So I feel like I shouldn't be the one to make a decision on this because, um, any other input or...
You're also welcome to, uh, un, under the state law, there needs to be a physical location. Um, it doesn't have to be, um, it, it's entirely up to you all. You can choose to all attend remotely, all attend in person, or you can make personal choices um, and have a mix. We are fortunately set up to be able to do whichever you would like to do and we will...
But sta, staff has to be there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, well, a person and not would be staff.
Yeah.
Um, it has been working. I know we've had a couple of meetings where there have been people remotely join with, with kind of a majority of us in the room. And it, it's felt to me like that's worked okay. I mean, you know, Paul...
You've done it a couple of times, Paul. Did you feel like it worked okay for you?
I will say that the upper room there, the audio sometimes, I don't know if you noticed this, Paul, the audio gets a little wonky sometimes upstairs. Yeah.
It's better to meet down here by firewood.
With, with, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it gets a little wonky upstairs sometimes.
That's okay. I mean, we can make our own choices then whether to come here or to do it from pub. I'm immunocompromised, so I'm gonna be, I'm gonna err on the side of caution.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that that's very reasonable. I mean, maybe we can just even state as a group that, you know, if anyone feels more comfortable joining remotely, you're welcome to do that. We've proved that it works well. And, you know, I feel like I was always able to see you well, you know, when you had something to add and... Kelsey?
Um, the only other related thing I wanted to just mention as a point of discussion is in the email I circulated, I asked if people have a preference for meetings that are not anticipated to be a large public hearing, if they should be in this room or in room 301 upstairs. And I got a few responses that seemed to prefer 301, but now I'm hearing that maybe the sound isn't as good. So I didn't, I just wanted to see where people wanted to even be on December 14th.
It's only, I only noticed it bad on the last, the meeting we had last night. At other times, uh, room 301 has had good audio.
I, I only did one zoom and it, it was pretty good except a couple of times it seemed there was a delay of what I heard or I couldn't...
I like meeting here a lot more than upstairs.
Tag you're it. I guess we have a...
Think, think about it. What we'll do, um, is we'll book this room. And, um, if you decide over time that you prefer the other one, it's easier to book the upstairs room than it is this one. This one, we want to make sure is booked if, if you might want it because lots of other community events could happen in here and it's really, um, frustrating to them if we have to boot them out, which we try not to do. So why don't we go ahead and book this room?
I have my own seat there, you can't boot me out.
Okay, um, anything else?
Yes.
Okay, let's adjourn. We're adjourned, great.
Could I book you briefly on...